Welcome to May 14, 2024 City Council Meeting. Roll call, please.
Mayor Webb?
Here.
Mayor Bojjan Sullivan?
Here.
Councilmember Londo?
Here.
Councilmember Lucio?
Here.
Councilmember Washington?
Here.
Please don't talk in the audience, please.
Can you shut that?
Excuse me.
That's... That's a no.
Anyways, Public Hearing Drinking Water Resolving Fund Project... Nobody's improving each other. I'd like to make a... See if we can move the public discussion up to the right public hearing. We have a motion to do that?
So moved.
Support. Okay. All right, we'll open up public discussion. You want to hear a public discussion?
Yep, I am.
This is for the public hearing for the water.
No, public discussion. It's approved. We just moved it up.
Oh, you moved it up. I'm sorry.
Let's go. Oh, you're speaking now.
You're speaking now. You're speaking now.
It's time for public comment.
Okay, Sarah. 334 East Bernard. How you doing?
Hi, good. Nice to see you.
Likewise. How you doing?
Good. All right. I am Sarah. I'm here... I'm also today Gaza. I'm here today to ask for Hazel Park to again call for an immediate and permanent ceasefire in Palestine. We have come here month after month with our elected officials to take a stand... to ask our elected officials to take a stance against genocide. Last month, the city manager stated his constant frustration with city funding and was proud to announce a multi-city resolution to get the attention of legislators to say, "Hey, we're here. We need this to change and we aren't going away." That is exactly what this group here today is doing for months. Our state legislators are so indebted to capitalist lobby groups that they are taking our hard-earned money from our communities and sending it to fund constant attacks on the people of Palestine. We need the support of all of our small cities to say, "Our constituents do not support this. We are no longer going to fund this and we aren't going away." We have heard month after month, "The city council won't make a resolution on global issues." I can't continue to urge you to understand that it's local. If you don't understand that it's local, unfortunately, you're choosing not to understand it. In March, two months ago, five months into the horrific attacks on Palestine, our city and our mayor stood up on the podium at Navistar Defense to offer the state of the city, the same company that profits off the imprisonment and death of innocent individuals. I brought a news press from Navistar Defense that they proudly put over that in 2010, they were excited to announce they received a $90 million contract from the Israel's Ministry of Defense. In 2018, Navistar Defense was acquired by Cerberus Capital Management, the firm that dominates the U.S. gun industry and sells more firearms and ammunition than any other company in the world. Although 2010 isn't the present day, we can be assured that we are still mass supplying Israel with the means to continue ethnically cleanse an entire demographic of people. Navistar Defense isn't locally owned. The money made from those contracts does not stay in our community. Anyone with the tiniest amount of tech skills can understand what hosting at Navistar ultimately conveys to their constituents. We all see those students camping out on campuses because they are mad that their education systems are investing in this genocide. I am mad that my city stood outside an IDF proud supplier during a time when an absolute massacre of Palestinians were happening with the same weapons that were made in that building. It's so crucial at this time to pass a human rights resolution calling for an immediate ceasefire in Gaza. Such a resolution would serve as such a powerful statement of our collective values and reaffirm our cities on wavering commitment to the principles of equality and social justice. I recently heard a comment say, "When given a chance, will you act like your heroes or will you turn away at the chance?" Which, given the chance, I really hope that this council in front of me today will boldly say, "Our city, Hazel Park, calls for an immediate ceasefire." Thank you.
Uh, Nuhwash?
Good evening. My name is Manai Nawash. I live in Madison Heights on Wolverine, just north of Ten Mile. I talked about my ties to Hazel Park last month, but I also have been trying to buy a house since February, and I have put a few offers on homes in Hazel Park, but of course... of course, I was outbid. My son also has two good friends who live in Hazel Park. I'm grateful for the opportunity to speak in front of you today. I'm asking you to call for a ceasefire in Gaza. This never was a controversial word until now. My mind keeps trying to understand why this isn't an obvious choice after 40,000 Palestinians have been killed with our U.S. tax dollars. I believe the silence has to do with myths we have been led to believe about the region. Myth one, the myth of the violent Arab. How many positive images have you seen of Arabs on TV or in the movies? Have you seen the loving Arab father playing with their children or the Arab mother giving her children hugs and kisses before sending them off to school? However, how many movies and TV shows have you seen an Arab portrayed as a terrorist? Although the vast majority of Arabs are peace-loving, why is this the image we see in the U.S.? In the last 30 years, what group of people has the U.S. bombed the most? There is a connection between villainizing a whole group and then being able to bomb them without much pushback. Myth two, they have been fighting for thousands of years over there. They will never stop. If you ask any Palestinian who was around during the early 1900s, including my father, who... not early 1900s, but he will have stories and they will have stories to tell you about how Jews, Muslims, and Christians got along in harmony for hundreds of years. There were no conflicts. It all started with the lead-up to the creation of Israel. Myth three, this is all... this all started on October 7th. Did you know last year before October 7th, the nonprofit Save the Children said that 2023 was the deadliest year for Palestinian children? Did you know that from 2008 to before October 7th, 6,400 Palestinians have been killed by Israel in Gaza compared to 300 Israelis killed? There are not two equal sides here. There's one group with the power, the third strongest military in the world, and one group with a guerrilla force fighting to survive. Myth four, Israel is the only democracy in the Middle East. If this is true, then why are Palestinians in the West Bank only allowed to drive on certain roads, not allowed to walk on certain sidewalks, very rarely allowed to build new homes or businesses? In the West Bank, Israel granted 33 building permits to Palestinians in the last five years compared to 16,000 given to Israelis in the same area. Did you know that Israel does not allow interfaith marriage? So a Jewish person is not allowed to marry a Christian or Muslim. Someone last month brought up that people are starving in other regions of the world, and this has nothing to do with Hazel Park. But the real question is whether the U.S. taxpayers are funding that starvation like we are funding the destruction in Gaza. You were able to pass a resolution remembering the Armenian genocide. Will we have to wait until the killing is done for you to pass a resolution remembering the Palestinian genocide? Palestinian fathers want to protect their children just like you do. Palestinian mothers love their children just like you do. Save the children of Gaza. We are all Gaza. Please call for a ceasefire now.
Maria Tarkowski?
Good evening. My name is Maria, and today I'm also Gaza.
Address, please.
My address is 7530 Woodview Street, Westland, Michigan. You can see that I'm wearing a Star of David on my chest. I wear it very proudly. I've lived near and in Dearborn for the last four years openly as a Jewish person. I would also like to say that I'm here tonight representing every Jewish person that is for Palestine because there are a lot of us. I'm going to give a little bit of history. Zionism was invented in the 1800s, and it was originally a movement calling for a homeland for the Jewish people. We have a history of being massacred, genocided, and displaced, much like my Palestinian brothers and sisters. Zionism was always controversial in my community. Jews have always been for and against Zionism. When Zionism became popularized to be a movement for homeland and Palestine, a lot of Jewish European labor unions specifically were against it, as were Palestinians living that were also Jewish. So this was always controversial in our community, and people like to say that being pro-Palestine is anti-Semitic. That cannot be true for a couple of reasons. Number one, there are Palestinian Jews. Number two, Zionism creates a danger for Jews everywhere because it conflates our religion, my ethnicity, my culture, my religion with genocide. And the reason it is genocide is because the original movement of Zionism never was specific. They said they want a homeland. And when they decided for a homeland in Palestine, what they did was they came in, they started infiltrating local councils, Zionists did, they started calling for Jewish-only labor, and they started openly being racist and very, very discriminatory towards the Palestinians living there. So the whole myth that the Arabs did not want the Jews there, Arabs did not like Jews, that was not true. The reason that these issues started was because Zionism posing as Judaism was infiltrating this land and trying to take it as its own. So everything you're hearing with this history of it's complicated, it's not complicated. Jewish history is complicated. Palestinian history is complicated. Our history and our safety intertwined is not complicated. So I'm standing here before you today to really ask yourselves, why are we not calling for a ceasefire? I'm here today because Hazel Park standing for a ceasefire is standing for Palestinian safety and Jewish safety because Zionism and the way that the state of Israel is currently working is only going to put us more in danger. Palestinians are my brothers and sisters, and I implore you today to stand with our community. Thank you.
Hank Cobb?
Hello, my name is Hank. I live at 300 East Harry Avenue in Hazel Park. In 1967, Isaac Deutscher, the great radical Jewish historian, said, "We must exercise our judgment and must not allow it to be clouded by emotions and memories, however deep or haunting. We should not allow even invocations of Auschwitz to blackmail us into supporting the wrong cause." In 1967, he was talking about Israel's treatment of the Palestinians in the occupied territories and of neighboring Arab nations. Time and age have not changed the thrust of Deutscher's words. To support the bombing of universities and churches, mosques, hospitals is a wrong cause. To kill thousands, tens of thousands really, of women and children is a wrong cause. This city council should instead fight for the just causes of peace and hope, and the best way to do that is to pass a ceasefire resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Flores?
Buenas noches. My name is Mike Flores on Manitou Avenue, and tonight, my name is also Gaza. Many of us in this room and on that bench that may identify as women, LGBTQ+ or other marginalized communities know all too well the trauma of dehumanization when the right words are not used. Why words like resolutions and ceasefire do matter? We, as a community, must be vigilant in ensuring that we do not perpetuate the cycle of dehumanization. I want to read words from American Palestinian poet, Zeynep Azam, to help us center on the most vulnerable humans being dehumanized in this genocide. Write my name. Write my name on my leg, mama. Use the black permanent marker with the ink that does not bleed if it gets wet. The one that does not melt if it's exposed to heat. Write my name on my leg, mama. Make the lines thick and clear. Add your special flourishes so I can take comfort in seeing my mama's handwriting when I go to sleep. Write my name on my leg, mama. And on the legs of my sisters and brothers. This way, we will belong together. This way, we will be known as your children. Write my name on your leg... on my leg, mama. And please write your name.
You'll need to unlock your iPhone.
And mama's name on your leg, too. So we will be remembered as a family. Write my name on my leg, mama. Do not add numbers like when I was born or the address of our home. I do not want the world to list me as a number. I have a name, and I am not a number. Write my leg on my leg, mama. So when the bomb hits our house, when the walls crush our skulls and bones, our legs will tell a story, how there was nowhere for us to go. Please bring forward a ceasefire resolution and vote yes on that resolution. Gracias, and thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Johnson?
My name is Mal Johnson, and I live at 50 Orchard Avenue. And this evening, my name is also Gaza. First, I want to address Councilmember Washington. I feel like it was you and you alone who got this council to do the bare minimum of this humanitarian aid worker resolution. But even before we learned of this, I wanted to say to you, if you truly don't want us to include you in with everyone else, speak up and call for a ceasefire on your own. You might not be able to do that here, but other council members have individual social media pages for their council work. If you don't already have that, create them and call for a permanent ceasefire there publicly. Don't be bullied into staying silent. For the rest of you, this resolution is such a slap in the face. To say you only care about the humanitarian aid workers but not the tens of thousands of people being murdered, slaughtered, and starved is hideous. I'm not sure how any of you actually felt this was a good resolution. It is clear it isn't being done because you actually care. It's being done to try to pacify us, but it's not going to work. Different people have been coming here for four months now for a resolution that calls for a permanent ceasefire, and you can't quiet us that easily. I haven't been able to attend every month, but your silence and responses that I've watched back have made me give up hope for government on all levels. It used to be that states and local government was so important when Congress didn't listen to us, but it's so clear to me that you all either support the genocide or are bought by politicians like every other on the state and federal levels. You all alone... you all alone made me believe local government doesn't matter. Good job. I will leave you with two food for thoughts. You say you speak of local issues. Dearborn has been called the jihad capital of the U.S., and a senator from Michigan has commented that it should be like Hiroshima in Gaza and wants to deny all aid to Palestinians. It officially became local long ago, yet you all still stay silent. Also, of the four months that our group has been here, to my knowledge, not one person has come to publicly speak against a ceasefire resolution. Please keep that in mind.
Raymond Holyfield?
Raymond Hollowfield, 29, West Milton. I'm going to read something here from UNICEF spokesperson James Elder. This is a quote, "The smell of children's burning flesh, the sight... the sight of children with unspeakable wounds of war, the burns, the shrapnel, shrapnel designed to rip through concrete. What does that do to a child? The broken bones, and there's also just the silence. The silence of children who have their whole family wiped out." Silence is what I hear from you guys with the resolution that you're going to pass tonight. It's incredibly neutral, and you cannot be on both sides of a genocide. I grew up in Hazel Park. I graduated from Hazel Park High School. I moved back here as an adult. I do things in the community. I run a comedy show, a monthly comedy show that brings revenue into the city that's sponsored by Hazel Park businesses. And I will say that I was ashamed to grow up in Hazel Park because when I was in high school, people freely flew Confederate flags outside of their homes. I saw that with my own eyes. I came back here because I thought the city progressed, and I realize that it hasn't at all. You cannot be on both sides of a genocide. Pick a side, call for a ceasefire.
Anyone else for public discussion? Look here.
Did she fill out a form?
And this will be the last one.
Paula Marie Dubel. I'm the mother of my daughter who lives in Hazel Park, and I'm here to support her. And I just want to say that my city of Sterling Heights recently passed the End of Violence Around the World Resolution, and I'm very proud of my city for doing that. I didn't think they would, so I just hope that you will consider doing the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Close public discussion. Public civic announcements. I just want to let everybody know we have the Memorial Day Festival coming up in a couple of weeks, and I want to let everybody know we do have things in place. What has happened in Berkeley is a shame and other areas, but last year, we had a very safe event, putting on having enough police there and having requirements for adults to be present with the minors at certain times of the day. And we are putting those implementations back in this year, and we will have a nice, fun, family event for all to enjoy and not have any ruffians come in and try to disturb the peace and tranquility of our fair. Any other civic announcements?
No, just that information about the festival will be available online and on Facebook page, and we expect to have a successful event this year. We want to invite everybody to the Memorial Day Parade, which will take place on Memorial Day at 10 o'clock. It will start at the junior high, and it will make its way over to the Hazel Park Recreation Center.
Thank you, sir. That will take us to the public hearing on Drinking Water Resolving Fund Project Plan. Mr. Young? Mr. Young?
Good evening, council. I'm here to discuss the water distribution improvements, system improvements with Noack and Fraus, our engineer firm. So back in 2019, when Michigan revised the LLC rule, it became the most stringent in the country. Throughout the years, we've all found the flaws with it and its rules and the sampling procedures. The main thing is, and the reason why I'm here tonight, there's never been funding to help cover these costs of what the rule is applying to. So the state finally has released funding in the form of a state revolving loan, more or less, and that's what we're here to go over tonight. We're in a crossroad point now with the rule. We've hit the five-year milestone, which now is going to increase the activity of what we have to do. Up to now, we've been doing the minimal 5%, which tallied up to about 30 different locations per year we'd have to repair or fix under the rule, which came out to about $150,000 a year. However, now that we're past that five-years point, we're going to now be responsible for doing up to about 125 per year at a cost of $625,000. So it's going to be quite a jump there. Sustaining this is not possible in the future without really adjusting rates or finding sources of funding, which is just not there. We've done our best to push this through our budget and not affect too many of our residents with raising rates or adjusting rates over time, but this might be the last year we can do that. So the pursuit of this fund is unnecessary. It doesn't mean we have to take it or accept it, but we should take it through the steps and work our way through until, you know, we actually qualify. At that point, we can decide how we want to move forward at that point, but at least we'll know we'll have some secure funding should we not find other options out there to help the situation, so.
So you all understand what Tim has said, correct? That we're preserving our options for the future tonight?
Correct.
Not committing to anything, okay?
Yes, we'll see. You know, we're going to constantly be looking for other sources of funding, even if we were to take this type of thing on. Is there going to be funding for debt relief later on that will show up once everybody's all in the same boat? A lot of cities in the area have grabbed these. Ferndale's got it. Marine City's got one. Lake Orion was a tempting one, but they are popping up everywhere, so we're just going to keep moving forward with your support on this. And I'm going to introduce Alan Scheck from Noack and Fraus. He's going to go over a little bit of the PowerPoint, the highlights of that for you to kind of bring you up to speed of what it is we're looking at.
Good evening, city council, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager. Part of the requirements of the Drinking Water Revolving Fund is a public presentation, and so what you have in front of you is a requirement of being able to submit an application. So the history of the system, the majority of the system was constructed between 1920 and 1960. The system is comprised of approximately 63 miles of water main and the other pertinences listed. The Drinking Water State Revolving Fund loan being sought is for water-led water service lines and critical system improvements. The Drinking Water State Revolving Fund is a financial assistance loan for 20 years at an interest rate of 2%. And the state also gives you the opportunity to submit certain community demographics, and we did that. And Hazel Park qualifies as an overburdened community, so your interest rate is lower than a community that's not classified as overburdened. In October 23, the city submitted an intent to apply, which has led us to where we are today. Yes, sir.
Who's loaning us the money?
It's the state of Michigan.
And why are they charging the public 2% on our own tax money?
That's a question we all want to know. There are many...
This is pretty... Well, again, it's...
We are not happy with the state of Michigan and their rules on this at all.
Shouldn't be charging us any interest since we got to pay for it.
We think it's a...
They should be paying for at least half of it, not the residents.
And as Mr. Young pointed out, there are and have come opportunities very much like the due diligence through your drinking water asset management grant to figure out how many lead service lines. So they are providing some grant money. This process and schedule, a draft plan was made available to the public the 1st of May. We are holding the public hearing tonight. We will take any necessary comments and amend the plan and submit it to Eagle by June 1st. They go through a process of ranking plans that are submitted. Not all plans are funded, so what you're hoping to be is in that project priority listing to where you're eligible for funding.
Don't find me a little hostile about Eagle, but if not, if they would have done their job years ago, we wouldn't have got to this point. They only got focused on them whenever they have a green news blowing out on the freeway. So, sorry. This is a bad subject with me.
I understand. Problems to be solved. So again, part of this application is to replace the lead service lines. As Mr. Young stated earlier, the lead and copper rule as part of the Safe Drinking Water Act in 2018 made it a mandate that communities who operated water utilities replace lead service lines. The other problem to be resolved is targeting replacements, water main replacements that are approaching their 100-year design life, and then looping certain parts of the system that gives you reliability and improves water pressure. There are alternatives outlined in the plan. The lead service line, the complete replacement is the recommendation from the Capital Improvement Plan. The alternatives for Batel area dead-end looping is to loop those two water mains and tie them into water mains that are in Batel versus trying to acquire a private easement. The alternatives considered for the eight-mile and dequinter water mains are directional drilling. The other recommendation is to get those water mains out of the pavement because when there is a water main break, there's substantial effort to get down to the water mains and maintain traffic and safety of the workers. There are cost comparisons really on the lead service lines. There aren't really any alternatives other than full replacements. There aren't really any alternatives other than full replacements. The cost comparisons for Batel water main looping is, again, looping it right in the street on Batel versus trying to acquire a private easement on private property. The Dequinder and Eight Mile water main replacements, the recommendation is a directional drill process versus an open cut. So again, to reiterate the recommended projects, the lead service line replacements replace the lead water service lines in their entirety, and that's required as part of the Safe Water Drinking Act. The CIP repairs in Batel, the replacement of water main in Dequinder and Eight Mile, and replacement of other identified water mains. The funding sought through this grant, or not grant, application, excuse me, this loan process is approximately $13.5 million. You may ask how the loan is repaid. It's repaid over a 20-year cycle at 2%. And there's different methods of how that money can be collected, if you will, through rates. So you can either just put a method of applying all debt per cost per unit of water. You can do a surcharge, or you can do what they call a meter equivalent. So based on the size of the meter, you'd be charged more. If you had a big meter or a residential meter, it would be something less. Doing the monthly surcharge would equate to approximately $9.80 more a month. And then over an entire year would be about $117. Again, if this drinking water loan is approved, the city of Hazel Park will revisit possible rate structure and user charges to implement the most equitable method for loan repayment. Again, there's certain project impacts. The beneficial impacts are environmental. You're getting all the lead out of your water system. The adverse impacts environmental are more short-term and are considered things that happen during construction, intermittent traffic disruptions, minor ground disturbances. The communitative impacts are financial. And again, that's about $117 a year for a rate payer.
One more question.
Yes, sir.
Are we paying the same amount as every other city per, let's say, square foot of pipe that we're laying down? Or are we getting a different rate from us other cities? Sort of like the water rates we do now, where we get different rates for every, depending on what year it is. Because, you know, the Water Authority can't necessarily give us what rate we're paying half the time anyway.
That type of work gets bid out. So a lot of it's going to determine, you know...
I understand it, but we're paying back X amount for what, 90 miles of pipe here? Thereabouts estimated that you'll be replacing?
No, we won't be replacing the 90 miles.
However, miles you're going to replace. Compared to other cities, is there a set standard of per, how much per foot of pipe that we're being charged compared to other cities? Is it going to, since it's state money, why isn't it regulated across the board?
That's a good question for somebody at the state, really. I mean, they would just go to a bid process.
Well, maybe that question should be raised.
Everything else, yeah. It is a good question. I mean, if you're doing a state loan, I certainly...
Sorry, I'm just a little ticked off about this whole topic, but that's okay. It's a, this is a last-ditch effort to save face after the flat water crisis, wishing it had never happened in the first place.
So again, mitigation of impacts, adverse impacts environmental. There'll be soil erosion, sedimentation control measures set up to make sure that errant particles on sites don't get into storm sewers. Adverse impacts, again, the environmental, the ground and pavement disturbance, disturbed pavements will be restored in kind. Unpaved areas will be sodded, seeded, mulched. Adverse impacts environmental typically comes along with construction projects, which is dust and noise. And those will, improvements will be completed during hours of operation. And at this time, we'd welcome any public comment. And for the record, people that do have public comment, if they could please state their name clearly before speaking.
I'll open up the public hearing on the Drinking Water Resolution Fund Project Plan. If anyone wishes to speak on this particular issue, feel free to step up and be as vocal as I have been.
I have a question on the...
Close the public hearing out here. A city council person, Alyssa Sullivan, would like to have a statement.
I was including myself with the public. I apologize. What is the longevity of this project? And what is the, like, what is the length of the time it will take to finish this project?
That's something we can't answer now until we've actually moved forward to getting contractors and to do the work where we'd have that discussion. And hopefully, the state stays out of the way and lets us move along.
Do we have an estimate of a time approximate that we think it would take? Like, we think this is a three-year project, a five-year project?
Well, we set up for 20 years, but myself, I mean, the best I can come up with for you would be I'd like to see it done as fast as possible because there is so many cost factors in yearly, just in supplies, equipment, manpower, that if you drag along, you're probably going to pay in out-of-pocket after you've exhausted your loan because you still haven't completed anything, you're just slogging along. So I would be pushing hard to see. Now, it's going to involve a lot of cooperation between not just the contractors and the weather, but it's also going to be the residents themselves are going to have to understand, you know, we're going to get there, we got to get the work done. We can't keep putting things out or putting things off at that point. You know, we'd have to systematically set it up within the city, probably to work street by street, cover all of Mahan, and then next street down, next street down, just keep hammering out until we've cleared them all out, so.
And remember, for the record, we all know what this is, correct? This is about replacing...
Yes.
Lead lines.
Yes.
Okay. So again, these are replacing lead lines in private residences. This is a mandate from the state that we believe is an unfunded mandate and believe the state should be providing the funds for us.
I look at it, you know, we all have roofs, we all have gutters, we all have lawns. The city doesn't come through and do any replacements on that if we ever have to. There's always a cost recovery, such as a cut and clean, whatever. But this is something that we've been pushed on. And it's not easy work because you are drilling holes into people's houses about eight feet down and, you know, disrupting their foundations and everything. I mean, we're really have to be careful how we do this work.
Oh, I just said there's a lot of liability.
Yes.
That's potentially very true.
And we found out just in recent past that, oops, you got to ground these houses because we're removing that grounding system as we remove these lines. So that adds another level of what we have to do at each house.
Let me ask you another question. What if the resident doesn't want to have it done? Is their property?
There really isn't a clear answer. The state just shut their water off. That's the answer from the state of Michigan.
And they go back to another law.
Yeah.
Persons have got to write the water.
If they're paying for it, yeah.
If they're paying for it.
Correct.
In the spirit of the state's dig ones philosophy, is there additional infrastructure projects that we would be able to do simultaneous to help mitigate the long-term effect of this?
The thought of doing like a street water main on the street that might contain, you know, many homes that have a lead service line was visited, but I'm not sure if we could tackle enough lead service lines if we have to do a whole water main as well down a street. But it would be really the ideal way to do it. It's just that you got to spread this out throughout the whole city. So we may not be able to make that work.
Maybe we can get DTE to bury their power lines, too.
Now, the several water mains that we did put into the plan are ones that are problematic. As I mentioned before, the eight-mile water main, that's out in the middle, that eight-mile road, that's like walking out on a NASCAR track, so we got to...
It's a big water main.
That's a good size, and we got to get that out of there so we, our guys don't get in trouble.
And that will probably mean shifting all the traffic on Eight Mile to the opposite side, two-way traffic on the other side, probably.
Yeah, it would depend what, you know, and then, of course, the permitting there because you're now going to deal with Wayne County as well as us. And when you get near Dequinder, you got to develop with Macomb County. So I mean, there's a lot going on there, so.
This is a state trunk line, what they pay for it?
We've tried.
We have made, I ask many times.
State trunk line.
The bottom line is, like I said, we don't really have to accept it, but it's an option that we should probably pursue just to have that ability to grab at this type of funding if this is all that's available in the future.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to request then that you guys pass the resolution adopting the final project planning documents for the water system improvements and designing an authorized project, designated, pardon me, authorized project representative. I request that you pass the attached resolution, and we can move forward.
Move approval of resolution 05-016-24.
Support. On favor? Aye. I vote no and protest. Thank you.
Well, at least we have preserved our option.
I just cannot...
Incipitate in this.
Kind of bureaucracy, man.
Well, again, it's...
Just how do we pay on tax dollars we already pay on?
That's been, everybody I talked to in all the different municipalities that are, they're dealing with the same thing. We don't get it.
Government, me, I can't...
Oh, no, it's something, so.
No, everybody's, we're upset about it, but again...
I know, it's a fact of life. I get it.
It was a poorly argued court case that went against us, and I think it should be looked at again. But anyways, is what it is.
Thank you for coming out. I wasn't picking on you.
Thank you.
Thank you again for answering all our questions. It takes us to special presentation. I know we're all dying for this one. We'll just go down each one of them. We need a motion to approve or adopt the resolutions and proclamations, 1 through 13.
I move, well, it renumbered, so I got it. I move approval of resolution 05-1424-1524-1724-1824-1924-2024, as well as proclamations declaring May Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, Huntington's Disease Awareness Month, Mental Health Awareness Month, the first Friday in June to begin violence awareness day, and May 15th to June 15th, 2024, as Tourette Syndrome Awareness Month in Hazel Park.
And you have the...
I'll second it.
We have a second on it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any staying? Nobody's sustaining. Mayor Protem, it's on you to have item one.
Thanks so much. The first resolution on our agenda tonight is a resolution opposing the DTE Energy's proposed electric rate increase. This is a resolution that I worked on with a commissioner in Mount Clemens. Whereas, the city of Hazel Park, county of Oakland, state of Michigan, is a duly organized and existing unit of government created under the laws of the state of Michigan. And whereas, the mayor and city council of Hazel Park recognize the burden of high utility costs paid by residents. And whereas, Michigan is the state with the second highest instances of power outages between 2000 and 2021, and the fourth state for longest restoration times, while residents pay the 11th highest rates in the nation for electricity. And whereas, the sole provider of electricity in Hazel Park and provider of 2.3 million customers in southeast Michigan has proposed a rate increase of 4.56 million, and if approved as proposed, will be the largest rate hike in Michigan history. And whereas, DTE has previously approved, was previously approved for a $368 million rate hike in December of just 2023. And whereas, DTE Energy reported $1.4 billion in profits in 2023 and paid its chief executive officer over $10 million in total compensation in 2022. And whereas, DTE Energy has implemented rate hikes in the past to fund infrastructure updates, it has demonstrated a lack of cooperation has imposed a financial burden on municipalities as they endeavor to update critical infrastructure owned by DTE Energy. And whereas, the excessive and burdensome rate hike proposed by DTE Energy, if approved, would result in serious hardship for Hazel Park residents, but especially those who live in lower and middle-income houses, fixed-income households, small businesses, and operating nonprofits. And whereas, the mayor and city council of Hazel Park oppose DTE Energy's proposed rate hike and urge the Michigan Public Service Commission to address DTE Energy's rising costs, which burden Hazel Park residents and residents across all Michigan municipalities. Now therefore, be it resolved, this 14th day of May, 2024, that the mayor and city council of Hazel Park, along with our surrounding communities, encourage residents and customers of DTE Energy to voice their concerns and perspectives by submitting written comments to the commission via email at mpsc underscore commissioners@michigan.gov. Be it further resolved that the city clerk share copies of this resolution with neighboring municipal jurisdictions. And that's it.
Thank you. Moves to item, resolution 05-017-24, supporting House Bill 5965.
Councilman Londo want to read that one?
Yeah, actually, we don't need to read that.
We don't need to read that?
You skipped my statutory revenue sharing one.
Oh, yeah. Can we go back to?
Number two.
05-24.
We're going to go back to that one?
05-15. It's the second portion of my one of two from last month. This is the, this is the second portion of the resolution.
Go ahead.
Supporting statutory revenue sharing reform. The city of Hazel Park, along with other local units of government in Michigan, relies on state revenue sharing to provide general fund services to its residents. And state revenue sharing in Michigan is divided into two types, constitutional and statutory, with the latter being subjective to legislative appropriations. And through the Senate's government annual appropriation process, actual statutory revenue sharing payments to cities, villages, townships, and counties have been below full funding each year since 2001. In 2023, the city of Hazel Park received approximately $1 million less in its portion of statutory revenue sharing payments than it did in 2002. And adjusted for inflation in $2024, that reduction equates to a loss of over $1.7 million annually. This reduction in statutory revenue sharing places an undue financial strain on the city of Hazel Park and other Michigan cities, resulting in a reduction of essential services or increased local taxation, both of which adversely affect residents. The 2023 state budget allocated $530 million to statutory revenue sharing to be distributed to all cities, villages, townships, and counties through its annual appropriations process. In October of 2023, the state House of Representatives voted 106 to 4 in favor of establishing a revenue sharing trust fund for cities, villages, townships, and counties. That act creates a stable and predictable revenue source by dedicating a portion of sales tax revenue for annual statutory revenue sharing payments dedicated for cities, villages, townships, and counties. And state revenue sharing accounts for more than 15% of the city of Hazel Park's general fund budget. The recent Growing Michigan Together Council report highlighted the need for continued local investment and the importance of the relationship between thriving local communities, population growth, and positive local economies. So be it resolved that the mayor and city of Hazel Park hereby ask our state representatives and Governor Whitmer's administration to support the adoption of House Bills 4274 and 4275. Be it further resolved that the city clerk share copies of the resolution with neighboring municipal jurisdictions. This was an effort by Laura McCulsky to really bring attention back to the state revenue sharing issue. All of our, every city in Michigan is affected by it. Hazel Park has lost over $26 million in the last 20 years. That is three times our annual budget, and that is unacceptable. This is why we're continually in positions where we're having to seek issues with borrowing money back from the state because the taxes that we originally should have been receiving cannot be dedicated to the projects that we have in our communities. So, thank you.
That was my whole point earlier. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who's next?
Me.
Me.
Items, Andrea Washington would like to read one.
Yep. This is item number six, resolution supporting humanitarian aid efforts across the globe. Whereas, war and other conflicts, plagues, and pandemic famine, and natural disasters have caused incalculable suffering across human history. And whereas, humanitarian aid workers and relief agencies step into these hazardous situations to provide food, shelter, and medical services to those who are impacted by these tragedies. And whereas, these aid workers often undertake this important mission to protect and preserve innocent human life at great personal risk to their own safety. And whereas, because of the important work that these organizations do on behalf of all humanity, it is critical that all governments and groups exercising force or authority do everything possible to protect and enable humanitarian relief operations in their mission to protect innocent life and alleviate suffering. And whereas, Hazel Park residents have a long and storied history of membership in and support of humanitarian organizations. And whereas, Hazel Park residents who are concerned about humanitarian issues across the globe are encouraged to volunteer with or make a donation to the Red Cross, the Red Crescent, or any other charitable organization that supports humanitarian efforts. So therefore, be it resolved... organization that supports humanitarian efforts. So therefore be it resolved, the city of Hazel Park recognizes the importance of humanitarian efforts and commends all those who attempt to aid innocent human beings in conflict zones and disaster areas, and we call upon the, those in positions of influence and authority to protect and assist those humanitarian endeavors.
Okay.
Have the next one, too.
Go right ahead.
Item seven, resolution supporting human rights. Whereas the city of Hazel Park recognizes the vital importance of ensuring fair treatment and respect for humanitarian rights within its jurisdiction as enshrined in international law, the, and the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, and whereas the city of Hazel Park previously adopted a human rights ordinance prohibiting discrimination in housing, employment, public accommodations, and public services, and whereas upholding these rights demands collective action from local governments, organizations, communities, and individuals condemning unequivocally, sorry, any discrimination, oppression, or violence based on race, gender, ethnicity, religion, nationality, sexual orientation, or any other characteristic, and whereas promoting peace, justice, and prosperity in Hazel Park necessitates fostering a culture of tolerance, understanding, and dignity for every individual. So now, therefore, it be resolved, the city of Hazel Park affirms its unwavering commitment to ensuring fair treatment and respect for all humanitarian rights, for all, I'm sorry, for humanitarian rights for all residents without discrimination or prejudice, and the council pledges to uphold and defend the principles of equality, justice, and human dignity, actively working to eliminate all forms of discrimination and oppression within Hazel Park, and recognizing the importance of fostering empathy, compassion, and solidarity. The council calls upon local authorities, organizations, residents, and individuals to take concrete actions to protect and fulfill humanitarian rights, especially for marginalized and vulnerable populations, and the council commits to promoting dialogue, cooperation, and mutual respect among residents of diverse backgrounds, cultures, and beliefs, essential for rebuilding a more just, peaceful, and inclusive Hazel Park, and acknowledging that safeguarding humanitarian rights is a shared responsibility requiring sustained effort, collaboration, and solidarity across generations within the Hazel Park community.
Okay. A resolution oh five dash twenty dash twenty four, a resolution recognizing Jewish American Heritage Month. Whereas Jewish American Heritage Month is an opportunity to celebrate Jewish Americans and encourage all to learn more about Jewish heritage in the United States, and whereas Jewish American month, American Heritage Month originated in 1980 when Congress passed a resolution authorized and requested the president to issue proclamation designating April twenty one to twenty eight, nineteen eighty, as Jewish Heritage Week, and since 2007, the White House has issued a proclamation for Jewish American Heritage Month, and whereas the American Jewish community has grown to over 6 million, representing approximately 2% of the American population today, and whereas Jewish Americans, past and present, serve in government and the military, win Nobel prizes, head universities, and corporations, advance medicine, create enduring works of visual and performance art, write great American novels, and so much more, and whereas Hazel Park remains committed to supporting its Jewish American population and to condemning all forms of religious discrimination, and whereas the month of May is a time for the residents of Hazel Park to learn more about the heritage and accomplishments of Jewish Americans through educational programming, activities, and ceremonies. Now therefore, Michael Webb, mayor, hereby proclaim May 2024 as Jewish American Heritage Month in the city of Hazel Park.
Okay. And it takes us to.
APA month.
Yours, Andrea?
Yep. Proclamation declaring May 2024 Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, and as a proud Asian Pacific American myself, not many people know that, my grandmother is a Japanese war bride, so I'm happy to read this. Whereas the people of the United States join together each May to pay tribute to the contributions of generations of Asian Americans and Pacifics, Asian and Pacific Americans who have enriched the history of the United States, and the history of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders in the United States is inextricably tied to the story of the United States, and whereas the Asian Pacific and Pacific Islander community is an inherently diverse population composed of more than 45 distinct ethnicities and more than 100 language dialects, and whereas the month of May was selected as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month because the first Japanese immigrants arrived in the United States on May seventh, eighteen forty three, and the first transcontinental railroad was completed May tenth, eighteen sixty nine, with substantial contributions from Chinese immigrants, and whereas section one oh two of title thirty six United States Code officially designates May as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month and requests the president to issue an annual proclamation calling on the people of the United States to observe the month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Whereas Asian Pacific, Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have made significant contributions to the United States at all levels of the federal government and the United States Armed Forces, and whereas there remains much to be done to ensure that Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have access to resources and a voice in the government of the United States and continue to advance in the political landscape of the United States, and whereas celebrating Asian Pacific American Heritage Month provides the people of the United States with an opportunity to recognize the achievements, contributions, and history of, and to understand the challenges faced by Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders, and now therefore be it resolved that the city of Hazel Park recognizes the significance of Asian Pacific American Heritage Month as an important time to celebrate the significant contributions of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders to the history of the United States and recognize that Asian Americans and Pacific Islander communities enhance the rich diversity of this, and strengthen the United States.
Okay. Takes us to Huntington's Disease.
This is a proclamation declaring May twenty twenty four as Huntington's Disease Awareness Month, and this is particularly near and dear to me. It's my father-in-law and both of his siblings have Huntington's Disease, and while it is a fifty fifty proposition that that gene is passed on to the next generation, I am extremely grateful that my wife was spared, but whereas Huntington's Disease is a progressive neurodegenerative disorder affecting more than 30,000 Americans, while another 200,000 are genetically at risk of inheriting the expanded gene responsible for causing the disease, and whereas each child of a parent with Huntington's Disease has a 50% chance of inheriting the condition, which can present at earlier ages and successive generations, and whereas Huntington's Disease typically occurs in midlife between the ages of 30 and 50, although a less common juvenile form can present in childhood or adolescence, and whereas the average life expectancy of individuals with Huntington's Disease is 10 to 30 years after symptoms begin, and earlier age of onset is associated with more rapid disease progression, and whereas since the discovery of the gene that, that causes Huntington's Disease in 1993, the pace of research has accelerated, and today scientists across the nation are conducting important research into Huntington's Disease, which at present has no effective treatment or cure, and whereas it is critical to the success of research and support services to raise awareness in the general public and the medical community about Huntington's Disease. Now therefore be it known that Mayor Michael Webb hereby proclaim May 2024 as Huntington's Disease Awareness Month in the city of Hazel Park.
Thank you. And I'll read this one here. Mental health awareness month is May. Whereas mental health includes our emotional, physical, and social well-being, it affects how, how we think, feel, and act. It also affects how we handle stress related to others and make choices, and whereas mental health is important to our individual well-being and fatality, as well as our families, communities, and our businesses, and whereas mental health, America's 2023 state in mental health in America survey ranks Michigan 25th in the nation for prevalence of mental health, mental illness, and 20th in the nation for access to care, and whereas May first through May thirty first, 2024 is recognized as Mental Health Awareness Month. The M H A 2024 theme is, we, where to start? Mental health is in a change, is in a changing world, which highlights getting back to the basics, including self-care, coping skills, advocating for more mental health, and knowing when to seek an additional help, and whereas Oakland County Health Network joins our national partners in promoting this year's Where to Start campaign, and whereas mental health management ensures that individuals can focus on their abilities to live, work, learn, and fully participate and contribute to our society while promoting diversity, inclusion, and acceptance, and whereas improving, improving our systems that care for vulnerable populations, access to non-emergent and crisis services, advanced integral, integrated physical and behavioral healthcare, along with providing relationships, help fortify services and coordinated, which are coordinated by O C H N, and whereas Oakland County, Oakland Community Health Network, O C H N, and its service provider agencies are committed to inspiring hope, empowering people, and strengthening our community. Now therefore be resolved that Oakland County, Oakland Community Health Network hereby recognizes May 2024 as Mental Health Awareness Month. O C H N calls upon our citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, faith-based organizations, schools, to recommit our state to increased awareness and understanding of mental illness and their need and appropriate and accessibility services for all people with mental illnesses to promote recovery and a higher quality of life. Thank you. Councilman LaCaro?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A proclamation declaring May fifteenth through June fifteenth, 2024 as Tourette Syndrome Awareness Month in Hazel Park. Whereas an estimated one in every 160 children ages five to 17 in the United States are diagnosed with Tourette Syndrome, and whereas Tourette Syndrome is defined as a group of childhood onset neurodevelopment conditions known collectively as tic disorders, which become evident in early childhood or adolescence, and whereas these tics are involuntary, rapid, sudden movements or vocalizations that occur repeatedly and may change in nature, frequency, and severity without forewarning, and whereas individuals with Tourette Syndrome frequently have co-concurring conditions that complicate their care and diagnosis and cause more impairment than the tics themselves, including attention deficit disorder, attention deficit hyperactivity disorder, obsessive-compulsive disorder, mood disorders, learning disabilities, handwriting difficulties, executive function disorder, and sensory processing disorder, and whereas Tourette Syndrome has historically been misinterpreted and considered to be a condition of emotional disturbance instead of a condition of chemical biology, and whereas children with Tourette Syndrome are often disciplined for mass manifestations of their disability by educators who fail to understand that the child is unable to control their tics and that the child may be delayed in their maturity and emotional responses, and whereas despite the fact that individuals with Tourette Syndrome may face discrimination while dealing with this unpredictable disorder, they are intelligent and capable of great contributions to society when given the proper support, and whereas understanding this disorder will help guarantee hope for acceptance and a better future for individuals with Tourette Syndrome. Now for their, now therefore be it resolved that the city of Hazel Park proclaims May fifteenth through June fifteenth as Tourette Syndrome Awareness Month acknowledges the needs of individuals with neurological impairment and urges all residents to support Tourette Syndrome awareness and education to assist those individuals and families who deal with this neurobiological disorder every day.
Okay. Thank you. That moves us to the consent agenda. Public hearing for.
Public hearing, adoption of budget, truth, and taxation.
Yeah, budget, truth, and taxation.
Forget about that one.
Yeah, the budget.
Open to public hearing for our budget, truth, and taxation. Seeing no one, close the public hearing. Mr. Klobuchar?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, the administration respectfully request you adopt the attached budget resolution and approve the 2024-25 city of Hazel Park budget.
Your honor, I proudly, excitedly move adoption of the fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget resolution and the appropriation military resolution.
Support.
Any dissension? Discussion?
Yeah, I would just love to reiterate, a budget is a labor of love, and I am endlessly grateful to every city staffer. I don't think that there's a single person that works for the city of Hazel Park that didn't touch this in some capacity, some more than others, but this is really a shared endeavor, and I'm just really extraordinarily grateful for them getting it done, getting it in front of us, and making sure that our core services and programs continue to be funded.
Any other comments? And I also would like to say thank you to our staff. We got it, this is the earliest we've ever passed this.
And I will give a special thank you to Lacy Christiansen, who worked extremely hard on this budget this year.
The first time we've ever had this.
She sends her regards, but it is her daughter's 16th birthday tonight.
It's more important.
Happy birthday.
All right, moves to the consent agenda.
Your honor, I move approval of consent agenda items one through twelve.
Support with comment.
Motion's made, supporting, any more dissent, any changes, dissension, discussion? We have Andy LaCaro waiting in.
Bring everybody's attention to item number six. The shroom shack.
The shroom shack.
I have been repeatedly asked that, about the sale of psilocybin mushrooms in the city of Hazel Park, and people repeatedly tell me it's available here or on the internet from somebody in Hazel Park.
We will be, for the record, we will be, this one has been investigated, they're not supposed to have it. We will be bringing to you a, a moratorium at the next meeting to deal with these things so that we can begin.
We have at least three different locations in the city, two on Nine Mile.
None of them should be selling anything to do with psilocybin, and some of them are not, are not operating appropriately. So Amanda Mason will have a report and some action for you to take at the next meeting.
I do remember shutting one down on Nine Mile.
Yeah, we have already shut one down, and others may be shut down between now and then. So that's all I'm telling you.
That's, uh, entheogenics are decriminalized in Hazel Park, so there's, all day.
Right, we're all.
If you sell commercially, feel free to gift them to your friends.
All right. Takes us, that consent agenda's passed. Any other comments on the consent agenda from anyone?
Just a text from Amanda Mason, who's probably watching at home that we did shut down another business, so we're on it.
Takes to administrative reports, ordinance to amend the Hazel Park Municipal Code, title ten, vehicles and traffic chapters, ten point four, zero expense of emergency response as follows, second reading.
Melissa Schwartz.
Excited about this one.
This was the $40 increase, the only increase we've had in many years.
Mr. Mayor, the administration respectfully requests approval on second reading.
Anytime.
I'll move approval of this ordinance to chapter, an amendment to chapter 10.40.
Support. Any other, any dissension? Discussion? Passes. Item two, orders to amend the Hazel Park Municipal Code, title nine, public peace, morals, and welfare, chapter nine point zero two, violation of state law as follows, first reading.
Mr. Mayor, this simply brings our ordinance into consistency with state law. If you have any questions, Melissa Schwartz will be happy to answer them for you.
I appreciate good housekeeping. I move approval.
Support.
Discussion, dissension? Motion passes.
I just want to point out something really quick on the last one that we passed. It's a cost and payments. This is not a, this is for fines. That's where that $40 increase comes up, so nobody thinks that we're like sneaking in something on their bills.
Yeah.
Just wanted to reaffirm.
That's with the court system. Thank you very much for that.
Yep.
Old business, new, new business, anybody have any new business they want to bring up?
Just want to clarify one thing in the budget because there was a slight little bit of misunderstanding about the increase in the.
Oh, that was my fault. Hundred percent.
Yeah, Luke.
Trash collection, it is going up $26 for the year, 50 cents a week. It is not, we are not adding another $273 a year to. to the fee, it's just going up and that'd be the total. So unfortunately, we're in inflationary environment, we have to pass on some small costs and increases just to keep up with. We've been, the general fund has been subsidizing that fund for many years, and we will continue to subsidize that fund, we're just subsidizing it at a smaller level. So again, we hate to pass on any costs and raise any costs, but this is a small one, and it's necessary.
Any other new business? Communications for department heads, any department heads wishing to come up and speak? Can all jump at once?
James, James, can you come and talk about the, the Safe Streets?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm calling you out.
Actually, if anybody wants to submit comments, we have forums right here for that. So last week, we attended a Safe Streets for All Public Engagement meeting in Pleasant Ridge. That's a plan basically to try to create Vision Zero in Hazel Park and some other communities around us to have no pedestrian deaths. We're trying to determine a target date for that right now, but the idea is obviously to make our streets safer for everyone who uses them, so.
And it's through federal funding, so the goal is with, what, seven municipalities?
Yeah, I believe there's seven altogether. Ferndale's leading it, we're one of the other municipalities. And there's actually a website, it's Safe Streets for All, I don't think we have a name for our specific consortium, but again, there's forums right there if anybody would like to submit comments. Thanks.
Thank you. Lee Shif, could you please come up? If you don't mind. Just a quick reiteration to the public about the safety of the event and Memorial Day, if you wouldn't mind.
Yeah, we've been having meetings for a while now with the other department heads and Serene Papakian and city manager. Safety is our number one goal, and we've been talking about that, we're going to have everything in place just like we did last year, and if we need to make modifications as we go, we'll do that just like we did last year.
I just had a lot of questions the last week or the last few days, I think we all have.
Can anybody go over what the, what the kind of outline of the, the way that people interact with the fair, the restrictions of when you have to have an adult with you? Can somebody please reiterate that here?
I don't have, some things memorized far as times, but yeah, you're going to have to have a guardian with you after a certain period of time, and it is not going to be an eighteen-year-old with five seventeen-year-olds, it's got to be a legitimate guardian that takes care of these younger, younger ones.
This is a parent guardian.
No masks at all, you show up with a mask, you're not going to be told, oh, just go put it back in the car, or whatever, no. You're, there's no reason for a ski mask at a summer event like this, you're going to be turned away and not welcomed back. Yeah, we're going to be very strict with the wristbands, we're going to have the police there up, up front, if, at the second entrance or just behind the ticket booth like we did last year, we're going to be checking everything we can. We've asked for assistance from Oakland County Sheriff's Department, Ferndale is going to help us out. We have more staff of our own than we did a couple years ago anyways, so.
Just for clarification with the no masks, medical masks are...
No medical masks.
No medical masks either?
No mask, no face coverings will be allowed.
Okay.
I'm serious, absolutely seriously.
Excuse me.
Absolutely seriously.
Excuse me!
That's it, then, that's it, that is for sure. Excuse me?
Fuck all of you!
Okay, you, I'm sorry, but you need to leave.
Yeah, they need to be...
You need to leave.
That's very disrespectful.
You need to leave, Mason, you need to leave.
That's not how we do this.
All right, come on, calm down.
Need to leave.
I would, I would think anyone that has a legitimate medical...
Right, with a car or something.
Need would not go to an event like that where there's a thousand people.
We're trying to make this event a safe, please, please, thank you. Thank you for your time.
And one other thing, since it's also Mental Health Awareness Month, we did have our co-responder interviews today with the other chiefs in our Madison Heights, Ferndale, Royal Oak, so we're moving forward on that, and I'm looking forward to that coming to fruition.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Any other department heads?
I just wanted to comment on, I looked up the actual information we have on our website. Individuals, well, it says all minors must be supervised by a parent or guardian after six P.M., all children under twelve years of age must be supervised at all times, non-riding supervising parents or guardians will also be admitted for free. It does say individuals violating festivity rules will be asked to leave and may be prosecuted. It says no face coverings are allowed except, except for religious or approved medical purposes, just to clarify.
And again...
No weapons allowed, bags are subject to be searched, no petition circulating inside of the carnival area, if you are asked to leave for any reason, there will be no refunds, and you must leave the premises. Just so we are clear on the actual rules.
And we need to, is that posted on?
It is, it's on our website, yes.
That's what I thought, thank you.
It is.
Like, let's not misspeak.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Cooler heads will prevail, thank you. City Attorney?
Nope, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
City Manager?
No, just thank everybody for coming and let everybody know that, remind everybody that Michigan's system of municipal finance remains fundamentally broken, and we're going to do everything that we can to make the corrections that we need. I'm glad that we passed the resolutions on revenue sharing in an attempt to try and get something done with that. Reiterate what the chief said, last year we had a very successful event, and, you know, we'll do everything that we can to make sure that everybody is safe as possible this year. Our procedures, they worked last year, and we're continuing to implement them.
Okay, thank you. Councilperson, not Andrea Washington.
I was going to say, hello, thank you, happy May. Again, I want to thank everyone that came out and spoke today and took their time to express their opinions and heartfelt feelings. I have Sarah Munoy, Maria, Hank, Mike, Mal, Raymond, and I believe Carla was the last speaker. So again, thank you so much for coming out today and taking your time out of your lovely evening. And I also want to add to publish the ERA. Thank you.
Okay, Councilman LaCarrel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I want to remind everybody that the Memorial Day festivities are going from Friday to Monday, the parade's on Monday and it starts at the junior high. The weather is great, so watch out for bicyclists and pedestrians. Thank you for everybody who's coming out and participating in the democratic process. And if you love somebody, tell them, and if you have children, hug them every day and tell them you love them. Thank you for coming out.
Thank you. Councilperson Londo?
Extremely grateful for everybody that came out, whether or not you spoke, just grateful that you are here participating in the democratic process.
Mayor Protem, Alyssa Sullivan?
Thank you so much. I have some art fair and art updates for the city. I was going to do them during our public notice, but I wanted to wait till the end for a little bit of good news. So I wanted to remind everybody that the Hazel Park Art Fair is this August, it is August twenty-fourth, eleven to seven, and August twenty-fifth, eleven to five. We currently have a hundred and thirty applications for ninety-two spots, it's very exciting, so we will have a nice full art fair this year. We do have two committed food trucks, and we have the return of the Snow Cone vendor, which was a huge success.
That was a big thing.
We also have commitment from the, the Ceramics Guild to come and do their throwing, and we have yoga scheduled for Sunday morning as well, like usual, and the roaming artists as additional to that. So this is a family fun, family fun and friendly event, we do have a beer tent, and all the proceeds from the beer tent are what fund the Arts Council every year. I also wanted to give an update on the PIPA grant through the DIA with the library, we have secured an artist. I'm not going to give that name out because I don't know if it's my position to do that, but we are expecting, I'm very, very excited about this artist. But we do have an expectation of some proposals by early June, and then our PIPA committee will vote on those and develop one of those proposals, and then we hope to get this started within the summer months. I also wanted to let people know that we have approved the Juneteenth Arts Scholarship again this year through the Hazel Park Arts Council. There will be two one-thousand-dollar arts scholarships, you can look for that information on our website, I'm sorry, on our website, on our Facebook page and on our social media. This will include Hazel Park and Ferndale juniors and seniors, and again, there are two one-thousand-dollar scholarships available, that is in conjunction with Ferndale. Also, I wanted to let everybody know that we have an international film and photo festival coming this July to Hazel Park, it's Nova Twenty-Four, it is organized by one of the Hazel Park Arts Council members with support from the Hazel Park Arts Council. The Arts Council has committed to matching grants for local businesses who are looking to participate, and you can find more information on this at info@nova24, and that's spelled out, T-W-E-N-T-Y-F-O-U-R dot com.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you everybody for coming out this evening, it's been a wonderful day, and everybody got to speak their piece, and I appreciate that. But speaking your piece, we were very respectful for your comments, and we do hear you, but when we have comments and we're trying to conduct business here and make a safe place for our community, please do not interrupt us. It's very rude and disrespectful. We have been very patient in listening to everyone, and I think it was very appropriate for us as representatives of the community to listen to you, and we try to accommodate where we can. And do we all feel about your, what you, what you guys protesting for, yes, we have compassion, we're not all cold-hearted people, okay? But we do have a standard of what we're going to pass and what we're not going to pass up here, okay? That's all I want to be, is the respect.
Hey, well, now it's his time, now you...
I'm just trying to tell you, we have the respect both ways, and that was very rude earlier, when the police chief was talking, we were trying to get to the point of, and our mayor Protem looked it up to make sure we clarified the language of, of safety for our kids and families this coming weekend, and that's what I like to say, thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Do we have executive?
No.
Motion to adjourn.
If you don't listen to us, we will be exercising our First Amendment right.